You're ready to call the meeting to order. As I've said several times, this is a good, it's not really a problem, it's a good thing to have so many people here. And we have officially 410 people registered, so that's great.[25.18][25.18](APPLAUSE). I hereby call the meeting to order and ask the chairman of the board, the selectman, Dan Tribuco, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
We'll get started very quickly. A couple of things, I want to go over procedures very quickly, a couple lessons learned from the last meeting, and then we'll proceed with the meeting. I want to particularly thank the Key Club. We had started a number of years ago, like 10 years ago, babysitting, child sitting for parents, and we kind of fell off the radar. And thanks to select board member Tracy Moreno, we have now been doing that, offered that service again, so I want to thank the kids. I went over and thanked them earlier, they're in the cafeterium, who are watching, the younger ones. And we also had a daycare, right Tracy, center that was...
There was a resident who arranged a daycare playground for tonight, but it actually was canceled last minute, so we just have the free babysitting upstairs in the library tonight.
And we thank them. And also, as always, Carol Dodge, sitting in the back there, is selling just what we need to get through what hopefully will not be a lengthy evening, caffeine and sugar. And it's back there, and she, as she always does, is selling that along with members of the Key Club to benefit the Key Club. I also want to introduce our legislative delegation, who is here, Senator Susan Moran, our state senator, who is here.
I'm honored to be here today.
And also Representative Josh Cutler, who is here as well, you probably saw him in the lobby. We will be represented by a second representative, she couldn't be here tonight, Representative Kathy Lanatra, who will have the Bryanville section, right, I think?
Precinct 3.
Precinct 3. And I know she's been around at a lot of meetings, and she couldn't come tonight, but she will be, assuming the results of the election turn out in her favor, will be representing Precinct 3, starting the first of the year. I also want to thank Comcast for their services this evening, and I hope I have this right, town meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 15, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. And streaming online at pactv.org/live. And if you really want to see it again, you can, it's available for viewing after, on the same, on the video shared channel on YouTube, so it's, we can become a YouTube The tellers have been all sworn in, as well as the deputy moderator, I'll address that in a moment. The chair is satisfied that the warrant has been duly posted, so the chair will dispense with the reading of the warrant. For those who are new, and I suspect a fair amount are, when you address the meeting, and you're welcome to do that, at any time, you have to do it through the chair, and we ask you to speak at one of three microphones, there's one in the very back, and there's one to my right and to my left. That's so the folks at home can hear you, everyone else can hear you, and the folks in the cafeterium can hear you. I also ask that you stay, even though you may think everybody knows who you are, there are some who may not, and the press may not, and the clerk may not, if you make a motion. So I ask that, even if I introduce you by name, just state your name and your street, that's all. So anytime you want to address the meeting, please do so at the microphones. The only exception to that is a point of order, and a point of order could be, Mr. Moderator, I can't hear, I can't see, I don't know what the vote is all about. The chair is fairly liberal in its point of order, accepting what a point of order is. You can shout it out from the audience, and I'll recognize you, but then we ask you to go to a microphone, so you can state your point of order. And I understand, because we are kind of cramped in, it may be difficult to get to the microphone, if those, if people are having difficulty getting to the microphone, are these cordless? They are, right? The ones, the two, yeah. So I just ask the tellers or the voters to maybe pass the microphone on to you, if you're having trouble getting out to the microphone. Now, just a couple of other procedures that I want to discuss very, very briefly. Quite frankly, for those who were at the last town meeting, it was not very pretty. One thing they say, when you watch a football game, you don't want to read about the refing the next day. And unfortunately, there was a lot of talk and discussion about the refing, the moderating of that meeting. And the chair takes full responsibility for that. We were thrown, and the chair was throwing some curveballs, quite frankly, we should have expected, and didn't. And so there were four lessons learned, I think, from that meeting, we discussed them with the selectmen the other evening, and I think this will make things much easier and much smoother, and it's so important that people walk away from a meeting feeling that maybe it didn't go their way, but at least it was a fair process and they were heard. So, a couple of things. I mentioned at the outset that we are using the cafeterium as an overflow. There is a deputy moderator, Steve Curley, who's been sworn in, Steve was a longtime chair of advisory committee, he has been our deputy moderator there for a number of years, will kind of control the flow over there. If the visitor section, which we used to have there, and I think this is something we're going to do from now on, we are going to have the visitor section in the cafeterium, so there's no question that there are. There are a few people in here who are either town officials or guests of town officials to address certain articles, who are non-residents, they are labeled, but everyone else here is a registered voter. If they are not a registered voter, then they must be in the cafeterium, and they will be segregated from the registered voters, who are the overflow crowd that's in the cafeterium. And there will be a teller there, a counter, to count the votes. And if I, also, if anyone in the cafeterium needs to speak, there is no microphone there, so they can watch the proceedings, they can hear the proceedings, but if they want to speak, they'll have to come into the main body and use the microphone at the back. The second issue is, and we ran into this problem at the last meeting, when, it's not an issue if there's a show of hands, or if there is a paper ballot, but if there is a standing vote, the chair will not begin the standing vote until everybody standing at the back is sitting somewhere. That caused a lot of confusion, because it's very difficult for the tellers to count when people are standing. So I will ask that if we have a standing vote, that I will order the doors be closed, anyone in the lobby that wants to vote can either come in here or the cafeterium, and we will not commence, we will not begin the voting until everyone is seated. That's number two. Number three is, everyone here was handed, or should have been handed, a paper ballot, in case one is called for, and that is entirely up to the meeting to decide whether there is a paper ballot or not. But if there is a need for one, you have it already, and the procedure will be just to tear it one way or the other, and put it in boxes, and this time we will have six boxes, three in the front, three in the back, and you'll just go up and drop your vote into a box. There will be no yes or no boxes, that somewhat defeats the notion of a secret paper ballot, but we have plenty of boxes, it should go quickly, and if we somehow or other need a second paper ballot, then we'll have to, we'll have to...
We're going to reuse them because some people checked in.
Well, okay, but hopefully there won't be a need for that.
We've already been out of the question.
So, so those paper ballots will be used if necessary, and we have the six boxes. Now, with regard to a paper vote, the town bylaw says that a paper ballot can be requested at the town meeting, so someone can move, motion has to be seconded, majority vote in favor of a paper ballot, or the moderator can order a paper ballot. Now, it's been the position of this moderator for the last 12 years not to do that, and the chair is going to be consistent on that, the feeling being that if the meeting wants a paper ballot, then it's up to you, and not the chair, to decide whether they have a paper ballot. And I'm told there may be a request for a paper ballot for the community center article, and again, that is up to you to decide whether we have that or not. And then the final issue is, the chair consulted with the chair's 5th grade math teacher from Sacred Heart, she's still alive, Sister Julia, who informed me how to count and how to come up with 2/3. One of the curveballs we were thrown was that we needed 2/3, and it was exactly 2/3, and the problem is, when there's a number that's not divisible by 3, you have to round up to get the 2/3. And we've checked with bond counsel, so we now know what a 2/3 is, and on top of that, we'll have the best math counter in the building be counting those votes and determining a 2/3, and that's our town accountant, Mike Buckley. So we will be prepared for that as well. So cafeterium must be sitting down to vote, paper ballot system should work a lot more effectively, and we know what a 2/3 is. So with that, one more procedural issue, and that is, there are several articles that need a 2/3 vote, and if there is any question, the chair usually asks for a show of hands. If there's any question, then we go to a standing vote, but a lot of times there isn't a question, if it's just a procedural matter. So the meeting has to give the moderator the authority to call it. So, Mr. Tribuco, and again, this is routine, we do this at every meeting, Mr. Tribuco moves that if a 2/3 vote is required by statute, the moderator is authorized to declare a 2/3 vote if, after a show of hands, the moderator determines that the 2/3 majority has been reached, provided however, that if a vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, the moderator shall verify the 2/3 majority by ordering a standing count of the yays and nays. Is there a second?
Second.
Any debate? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. And, oh, two introductions, three introductions the chair wants to make. We have a new fire chief, and this is a pet peeve of the chair, we have no newspaper coverage to speak of anymore, so people may not know what, who he is, and what he looks like. So, Chief, I think you're back there someplace. Chief Jason Viveros is our new fire chief as of June, comes to us from the town of Halifax, and Chief, if you're out there...[742.82][742.82](APPLAUSE). Just step here so people can see what you look like. Hopefully he won't have to come to your house.[754.82][754.82](APPLAUSE). Thanks, Chief. Also, we have new selectman Steve Sissiati since our last town meeting, Steve, raise your hand up front here.[767.23][767.23](APPLAUSE). And with that, we are ready to roll. We have the high-tech lottery system here, so we will do things in the order in which they are drawn from our high-tech bucket here. And the first order of business is Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, this is a two-part motion, I'll do the first motion. Move that the town appropriate 217,180 from free cash for the capital projects described in the table contained in Article 3 of the special town meeting warrant, with the funding sources listed as quote "free cash" unquote, in the amount set forth in the table for each such project. And further, that the town appropriate 2,453,000 from the town's ARPA funds for the capital projects described in the table contained Article 3 of the special town meeting warrant, with the funding sources listed as quote-unquote "ARPA", in the amount set forth in the table for such projects, and that the select board be authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out these projects.
Motion has been, it's on. You can just keep it on.
I think it's on.
Oh, that's my mic, that's me. How's this? The motion has been made and seconded, and by the way, deputy moderator tells me that the advisory has to speak a little right into that microphone, because they're having trouble hearing you in the cafeterium. Motion's been made and seconded, on the first of two motions for Article 3, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Chair recognizes Lynda Peterson.
Move that the town appropriate 1,924,500 to pay the costs associated with the capital projects described in the table contained in Article 3 of the special town meeting warrant, with the funding source listed as borrowing, water borrowing, and solid waste, including all costs incidental or related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow such amounts pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority for such projects in the amount set forth in such table, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that the select board is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out these projects.
Is there any discussion, you can just keep this on, you don't have to shut it off. Is there any discussion on the motion by Lynda Peterson? This does require a 2/3. Seeing none, we'll try it with a show of hands, and by the way, the chair should mention that the deputy moderator indicated there was no opposition to the last article in the cafeterium, and he'll let me know if there's a 2/3 there now. So for all those in favor of the motion by Lynda Peterson, Article 3, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. And it would appear as if it passed. Just waiting for, no opposition from the cafeteria. I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary 2/3 necessary for passage. Next item is Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town appropriate, oh, sorry, that's wrong, one. Mr. Moderator, move that the town appropriate $4,500,000 to pay the costs associated with the design and construction of a well field and chemical feed pumping station at the Swamberg Wells site, including all costs incidental or related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8 of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that the select board is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a 2/3 as well, so we'll have to wait for the vote from the other room, but for all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. No opposition from the cafeteria, and the motion carries, having reached the necessary 2/3 for passage. Article 2 is the next item of business. Chair recognizes John Shoal from advisory.
Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $56,727,000 from free cash to fund the new collective bargaining agreement between the town of Pembroke and Pembroke Police Officers Association Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 0064 for the period of July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2025.
Meeting will be in a brief recess. Thank you, Town Council Carolyn Murray. I think we misread the dollar amount, it should have been $56,727 from free cash. Correct, okay. Any discussion on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor, it takes a simple majority, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Just check with the other room, but I suspect, the ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Chair recognizes Tim Landy.
Mr. Moderator, that the town accept the provisions of GL, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H, which allows the property tax exemption to the full amount of taxable valuation of real property of the surviving parents or guardians of soldiers and sailors, members of the National Guard, or veterans.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion or question? Seeing none, takes a simple majority, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. No opposition from the cafeteria, I declare it so voted.[1333.33][1333.33](APPLAUSE). Chair recognizes Kristi Cullinane from advisory.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of in parcel of town-owned land located at 754 Washington Street, shown as assessor's map number F-9, parcel number 38, and described in the instruments recorded with Plymouth District Registry of Deeds in Book 4544, page 206, and Book 7202, page 12, containing approximately .923 acres, more or less, from the Board of Selectmen or Tax Custodian for general municipal purposes and/or for the purpose of sale at public auction to the select board for the purpose of conveyance, and to authorize the select board to convey a fee, simple interest, or any portion thereof upon such terms and conditions as the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town, and to execute any and all agreements and documents to effectuate said sale.
Motion has been made and seconded, that's the parcel. Is there any questions? Any discussion on this item? I need you to go to the microphone so we can, we can hear you. You could just state your name and street.
Jane Schenberger, and what else did you want?
Street.
Oh, Gorham Avenue.
Chair recognizes...
I was wondering, first of all, where is that? And I don't know what I was going to ask, I just, it's just, you know, you talk about all these things, but it's like, it doesn't make any sense, all this stuff. It's like, I don't know, I just wanted to know where was located, like, if I'm on Gorham Ave, where is that located? Do you know what I'm saying? It's like, where is it? It's just numbers to us.
And that's why we have a town manager, Bill Shannard. Chair recognizes Bill Shannard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Shannard, town manager. So where it is, it's at the corner of Congress Street and Washington Street, it's known as 754 Washington Street, and just as you can see, it was taken by tax title, and it has currently been transferred to the select board. We need to vote to sell it, so we can move it back onto the tax rolls. You can see that it's mostly wetlands, it's likely not useful to anyone but an abutter.
Like, is there a, I mean, what is the location?
But just, I can't allow, I just, I'll recognize you for a follow-up, and I didn't get your name, but chair recognizes Jane, the last name I didn't...
I was just, like, you know, like, if you said the movie theater is near there, do you see what I'm saying? It's like...[1536.15][1536.15](APPLAUSE).
Chair recognizes Bill Shannard.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, so if you're on Washington Street, this is Mary Lou's right, whoops.
Oh, all right. I just wanted to know.
Mary Lou's is right here.
All right, thank you.
Down the impassable Congress Street, right. Chair recognizes former select board member Bob DiMarzo.
Bob DiMarzo, State Stop Lane. So it's obvious, most of the lot is wetlands, so it's not real buildable, and anything that went on in that intersection for access is extremely dangerous. I live off, just past Congress Street, and anybody that uses that intersection knows it's extremely dangerous, and to allow anything to go in, coming in at that angle, whatever there, is a problem, and I don't see why the town's selling a piece of wetlands. What's the purpose? Can somebody tell us?
Chair recognizes Bill Shannard.
Sure, so people come to us asking to buy property all the time, I don't know why this person wants to buy it, it isn't an abutter who is interested in purchasing the parcel. And, you know, my goal would be to move any tax title properties that are not useful to the town back onto the tax rolls. We'll get financed, we'll get funds when we sell it, the select board will set a minimum amount, based upon that, we'll do bidding, the highest bidder, if we get one, it's been bid once before, we didn't get any, if we get a bidder, we will, if it's above the minimum value set by the select board, then we would accept the bid and sell the property, and the property would move back onto the tax rolls.
So, no idea what the purposes of the abutter buys that property, then? Has been any discussion?
Chair recognizes Bill Shannard.
So, I was told today that the abutter was before the zoning board of appeals last night, to get variances to build condos on an abutting property. They can't build condos on this, obviously.
Any further discussion on this item? You could state your name.
Hi, Susan Moore, Washington Street.
The chair recognizes Susan Moore.
Yes, thank you so much. Bill, that went before the board last night, the ZBA, and I just want to make sure I was clear, because I Googled the LLC, and I couldn't find any information on it.
Yeah, I don't, unfortunately, I don't know who they are, I...
Okay, thank you.
Any, any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, this does require a 2/3, because it's a transfer of property, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The ayes certainly have it by a 2/3 here, but we'll wait to hear from the...[1733.65][1733.65](MUSIC) Okay. The motion, the ayes have it, and the motion does not pass. Chair recognizes Sandy Beaton.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $353,983.83 from free cash to balance the budget and reduce the tax rate for fiscal year 2023.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by Kristi, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. And the ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article seven. Chair recognizes, and the Chair will explain that virtually every Town Meeting, we have a number of projects that are recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, the Chair of which is Lisa Colletti, who's also our health agent. And we'll take each recommendation, so there are A, B, C, D, four recommendations, we'll take each one separately as if they were a separate article. Each one just requires a majority vote. So for purposes of recommendation, A, the Chair recognizes Lisa Colletti.
Thankfully, I've heard worse welcomes, so I'm okay with that. Article A, move that the town, yes, move that the sum of $25,000 be appropriated from the Historic Resources Reserve Fund of the CPA, and that said funds be used by the Town Manager for rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources by performing exterior painting of the Lydia Drake Library.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? And there is. Chair recognizes Bob DiMarzo.
If my memory serves me right, I may be wrong, didn't we appropriate money for painting not too long ago? No? Okay, thanks.
No, this is additional. This is interior, exterior, two different.
Lisa, did you have to answer that through the microphone?
Interior, next here, are two separate projects.
Any further discussion?
It is not, just to let the Town Meeting know, is not unusual, into Mr. DiMarzo's point, to have the same parcels or the same structures come before us time and time again. For example, the high school ball fields. Things are done in a phased project to stretch the CPC funding out, so projects are often done in phases. So to his point, he's right, some of the same things will look familiar, but each and every separate article and appropriation is for a specific job or purpose with whatever parcel or structure it's working with.
Thank you. Any further discussion? By the way, again, to repeat, if folks are in the cafeterium, they're certainly welcome to ask questions, to join in the discussion. The moderator, the deputy moderator will indicate that to me, and we'll ask them to come in here to speak. So seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion by Advisory on Article seven, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Think I got it? My phone, okay. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted.
No, Mr. Moderator?
Oh.
Recommendation B.
Thank you. Recommendation B. Chair recognizes Lisa Colletti.
Thank you. Remove that the sum of $12,850 be appropriated from recreational reserve resource of CPA, and that said funds be used by the Town Manager for recreational purposes by replacing the floating swim platforms associated with Town Landing in Little Sandy Pond.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have, uh, we have to wait to hear. No opposition. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation C, the Chair recognizes Lisa Colletti.
Move that the town appropriate the sum of $10,000 from Historic Resource Reserve Fund of the CPA, thereby supplementing the funding voted under Article 12, Recommendation C, of the May 10, '22 Annual Town Meeting, and that said funds be used by the Cobb Library Trustees for the rehabilitation and restoration of historical resources by replacing the roof on the Cobb Library, just as an explanation, and so that Mr. DiMarzo knows, yes, there was a previous appropriation. It did not meet the full needs of the work for the replacement of that roof, so they asked for additional funds to complete that work.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes Select Board Member Steve Ceciati.
I'd just like to note that Recommendation A and B are publicly owned property, and Recommendation C and D are private entity owned.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Lisa Colletti, please raise your hand. All those opposed? No opposition from the cafeterium. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation C, D, the Chair recognizes Lisa Colletti.
Move that the town appropriate the sum of $36,575 from the Historic Reserve Fund of the CPC, and that said funds be granted to the Pembroke Historical Society under a grant agreement for the rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources by performing exterior repairs of the Quaker Meeting House.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Just want to make sure that everyone is duly counted in the cafeterium. All right. The Chair is going to assume that there weren't enough, if there were any no votes in the other room, that it was not enough to be a majority. And this requires a simple majority vote, certainly overwhelming here, so the Chair declares Recommendation D so voted. Last item of business is Article four. Chair recognizes Vice Chair Steve Walsh from Advisory.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town appropriate $3,100,000 to pay the costs associated with the design and the construction of a community center, including all costs incidental or related thereto. Such sum to supplement the amount approved for the same purpose under Article 27 of the June 22, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. And to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow such amounts under Chapter 44, Section 7, Number 1 of the General Laws, and any other neighboring authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, and that the Select Board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Motion's been made and seconded. The Chair recognizes Town Manager Bill Shinard.
Can everyone, yeah, that's great. We can hear me. Awesome. So I just have a brief presentation. We've done several public forums, and many folks have attended August and September, but certainly...
Bill, I'm gonna ask you, just, because I'm having a little problem in the other room, so you just have to...
All right. Is that better? Okay. So certainly not 400 people. So I'm going to do a brief presentation tonight to hopefully just get the factual information out there. I know there's a lot of questions. I'm typically not a social media person, but on this one, I've been following some of the comments made on social media. So I know there's questions, so let's get some answers to the questions. Obviously, this isn't functioning as designed. Okay. So the community center. As you may recall, back in May of 2021, we voted $19 million here at Town Meeting, and then the residents voted on operating over at the following Saturday. That got us to this point where we're at tonight. We've done the design work. We've done the bidding. We know the actual cost of the project. We know who the general contractor and subcontractors will be for the project, assuming we approve this tonight. If we don't, we'll go back to the drawing board and figure out what we can do. So just a couple of quick notes. This is on the same site as the current community center. One difference is that the general entrance is along the hatch building and comes into the parking lot, which is reconfigured in the rear. The building is designed to support multiple uses, including the council on aging and the Recreation Department. So the first floor, first floor houses the senior center offices, which are noted in, sorry about that, which are noted in pink here. It also has the senior center lounge and the multipurpose rooms, which are noted here. Kitchen, 537 square feet, a big, large, multipurpose room for large meetings and other meetings of the town, or it could be rented or leased for other events. And then, of course, the gymnasium, which is over 10,000 square feet. And finally, on the first floor, other than support area, electricity, et cetera, is this, yeah? Why is that not working? Anyway, it's the bathrooms adjacent to the gym on the right as you enter the gym space there. So again, the gym, first floor gym, it is divisible into four separate areas if we choose to, or it has one main gymnasium for the design. The kitchen, kitchen has multiuses. It's used for building functions such as rentals or day-to-day functions, Meals on Wheels and/or other similar programs, and importantly, the emergency shelter. We currently use our library as our emergency shelter. There is no cots or kitchen space at our library. Senior Center Lounge and Multipurpose Room on the first floor, as I said, they're designed to support council and aging activities. On the second floor, we have the Recreation Department offices, which are noted above the senior center here in green. There are multi-program rooms available on the second floor totaling just over 2,500 square feet. The rooms are designed to support different events, from meeting space to recreation and senior activities. There is a walking track that's suspended above the gymnasium, and the bathrooms are adjacent to the entrance to the walking track. So you can see, walking track, it's designed to support indoor walking, running, and instructor-led programs, general exercise programs. Programming and activity rooms on the second floor, they're going to support various recreation activities, including, as a school program, you know, study space for SAT, ACT, AP tutoring, et cetera. One big note that I want to make, the Town really doesn't have today an adequate emergency shelter. We have a lot of emergencies, even in the two-plus years that I've been here, where we've had to stand up certain shelters. This space will operate as a shelter. It is supported with generator, and for overnight activities, there are cot storage within the facility in the event that we need that. Also, we're working, you know, to bring the programming up to speed. This is draft form at this point. We'll be working with Recreation Commission, which I've met with several times, and Council on Aging, to really ramp up our program. Many of the programs are going to be free of charge to the residents. That walking space that you see, open gym space for various activities, you know, things like open pickleball, there are also going to be league activities or tournament activities where there will be a fee for those items. So let's talk about the bids for a second. The low bidder for the project, for the construction phase only, came in at $18,362,000. I'll note that the two general GC bids are very, very close. You can see that they're about $50,000 apart there. The low bidder is GNR Construction from Hanover. There's a huge advantage to that. If we, as a community, had to deal with an out-of-state GC, or a GC from Western Mass or the North Shore, it just, having them right in a store where their staff can come, meet with us, be on-site within literally minutes, is a huge player. They have multiple recent municipal projects, and those include, as you can see here, a ton of stuff. They've been in business since 1962. They don't default on projects. They don't have issues, and they basically know what they're doing. So I'm very pleased that they are our low bidder for this project. The advantage of us talking tonight about numbers, we know the exact numbers. We know what the bids are. We know what it's going to cost to do that project. So let's talk about taxpayer costs and what that means. You'll note, we voted in May of 2021, $19 million. At that point, we were estimating an interest, total interest cost, total interest rate of 2.0%. And the average estimated, average cost to the estimated taxpayer was $133.25 a year at that, when we did the vote. When we actually went out to bid, we got a rate of just over 1.8%, which brought the cost to $127.41. Unfortunately, COVID and all of the supply chain issues forced the project costs up, so we needed an additional $3.1 million to do that. The average impact to the taxpayer for that is $25.95. I'll note, the $19 million is already borrowing, already borrowed. You're already paying taxes on that money today. So what are the funding sources? Well, we talked about the $19 million already. We have a Massachusetts Legislative earmark of $200,000 from 2021. We have American Rescue Plan funding of $310,000. Those three items are already in the bank. We have those items, we can spend those items. We also have a 2022 Legislative earmark through the House of $200,000, and a 2022 Legislative earmark in the Senate of $100,000 specifically for senior center equipment, which we would propose spending on the kitchen items, if it ultimately passes. We also have a federal earmark under HR 8294 for $3 million. That's already passed the U.S. House of Representatives. I'm not going to tell you this is going to pass. In fact, if someone, if someone would have asked me to predict it or bet the House on it, I wouldn't. The two state ones, yeah, I think it's likely that we'll see that money. However, I note, these funds are not guaranteed, and I think it's important that we note that. So people have asked, what is, what is the operating cost for the building? We had the Town paid Ballard, King, and Associates to review the operations and the costs to do that. This is the roll-up of that cost. We have updated that based on new collective bargaining agreements for staffing. And as you can see, years one through five, the additional cost to operate the building ranges from a low of just over $103,000 to a high of $106,748. I just want to note that we are programming that in our budget planning process, so that we know, based on these studies, what the cost is going to be, and we are planning for it as we move forward. So I just want to take a moment. With us tonight are Brian Jarvis and Allison Maher from Compass Project Management. They are our owners' project managers. Allison is a Pembroke resident, so that's awesome to have her on staff. She's also local. I love having someone as your OPM that's within the Town. She owns it, so to speak, so, you know, when she's here looking at the processing, working with us, that's just a terrific thing. And also Brad McCord from Bargman Henry Architects. They've been the architects on this project from day one. So we are happy, any of us, to answer any questions you have. I'll put this back up there, Mr. Chair.
And the Chair would just state that if there is a question that either of, either one of these folks can answer, since they are out-of-Town folks and not Town officials, that it just requires a majority approval of the Town Meeting to allow them to speak, if requested. Chair recognizes the Chair of the Building Committee. Hope I get that right. I was close enough, I guess, right?
Andrew Sullivan, 2 Washington Street.
Andrew Sullivan.
Chair of the Community Center Task Force.
Task Force.
Yeah. A couple of things just to add to Bill's presentation. Thank you. You know, if this doesn't pass tonight, I think it's important for people to understand that, you know, the $19 million has been borrowed, and the Town would then go back and reevaluate the project to try to get it done under the $19 million, which would require pretty much starting from scratch with an architect. require pretty much starting from scratch with an architectural firm. The building would get slashed to pieces. The revenue stream would change considerably. We would most definitely lose both basketball courts, which are going to be one of the drivers for revenue. And costs will go up, you know, cost of living. Another 4% or 5% in a year from now is going to be $950,000. So, you know, the $3 million tonight, if it doesn't pass, will be chewed up in cost overruns and, you know, engineering and design work to look at this from scratch again. So, I mean, it's really a great opportunity here to finish this project. You know, it's -- it's -- $19 million was approved overwhelmingly by everybody, and we need this little bit more to get over the finish line. I want to point out again that it's -- this 3.1 is $25 for the average household. That's $2 a month. $2 a month gets this project going. And this town building, in the middle of our town, 30 acres in downtown Pembroke that we drive by every day, is now a condemned site. And, you know, the cost to remediate this, if we put that off another year, that's going to go up in addition to construction costs. So, the longer we kick the can down the road, and we've all been here for many, many years. There's been many committees studying this project. It's a tough one, but, you know, we really need to bite the bullet tonight and get this going. This building will come down. This will be a tremendous boon for the town. I think anybody, you know, comes back here in 10 years and sees this building up and running, I really don't look at it as a special needs project at all. This is a building for every resident in this town. Marginalized youth that wander around our town, that have no place to go. I have three children in this town. It's really a sad state when you see, you know, the kids are hanging around a dilapidated building. We deserve better. And it's time to get this done. So, this really, if we get this project going, and I think everybody's going to take a lot more pride in our town, talk to any of the realtors around here. I mean, there's people that come and look at our town, and they're saying, you know, what is going on there? And it's an embarrassment. And anybody that's okay with that staying as it is, I really don't think has the town's best interest. This is an important project. It's something in it for everybody. I didn't even get going on the seniors, you know. If we could get our Council on Aging Director up here, she could really hit home just the tough situation she is in, operating out of the building that they're in. There's over 4,000 residents over the age of 65, and that demographic is growing rapidly. We need to take care of our seniors, and we need to take care of our youth, and we're going to have a building and a facility outside of the building to be proud of. So, let's -- hopefully, we can take this step and move forward. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Kristy Cullman from the Advisory Committee. I'm sorry, Sandy. Sandy.
Sandra Meehan, 78, Queensbrook Advisory. This is a question for Bill. I'm just wondering if you can clarify objectively what will happen to the 3.1 if we do authorize borrowing? Is it guaranteed that it's borrowed? Is it not? Can you explain that process?
Chair recognizes Bill Shannard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the plan of action is if it's authorized tonight to sit on it, let's wait and see if we get any more grants. We're going to continue to apply. We're going to continue to work for those earmarks. We won't need this money until the end of the project. However, we can't sign a contract and give the contractor a notice to proceed without it because we don't have it today. However, we don't have to borrow it once we get the authorization until we absolutely need it. And if we never need it, hopefully, we never do, but we may, we'll never borrow it, or we'll only borrow the portion of it that is required to complete the project.
Chair recognizes Bob DiMarzo.
Moderator. I don't stand here to speak for or against the article. I was not at the last town meeting. I was home ill. Probably glad I wasn't there because I would have felt sicker from hearing how things went. But I do believe in the process, and I think you've aptly prepared this town meeting with a written ballot. There's been discussion on all sides of how people voted, how they feel, and so on. And I do believe in the process. Everybody should be able to vote as they feel without any feeling of recrimination, somebody pointing fingers and saying, "Shame on you," or "You're good, bad, or indifferent." So, having said that, I move that after all discussion on Article Four is done, that the vote be taken by written ballot and give you the vote that you need.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All those -- so, the motion is to conduct a paper ballot when debate is ended. Although it takes a simple majority vote of this meeting, all those in favor of a paper ballot, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The noes certainly have it in the main auditorium. We'll wait to hear Well, I can't recognize anyone. We're in the middle of a vote, but I can certainly do it afterwards. Just wait till after. The noes have it there as well, so the motion fails. Any further discussion? There's a microphone in the back, which you can use as well. Try it again.
Hi. It's on.
If you could just state your name.
Gretchen Nemitz, and I am your director here at the Council on Aging.
Director Gretchen. The Chair recognizes you.
It's been a tough few years, not just for the seniors, but for everyone. I remember last year with my staff over here flipping grilled cheese and making tomato soup to feed people who were in our building because there was no electricity for over a week. We were heating them. We were trying to have them have some form of nourishment in a building that was really impractical to do that. It was crazy. Over the last year, we did 800 vaccinations. If I had a bigger room, we could have tripled that. We could still do that. I mean, COVID isn't over. We're going to have to do this every year. We're going to have to have boosters. We're going to have to have health clinics. Lisa always sets us up with health clinics, which now we don't even have a nurse's office. The podiatrist goes into the bathroom with a client. It's just not worth it. But you know what? The good thing about this building is it's intergenerational. Grandma can come, pick up the kid from school, and then they can -- she can go walk the track while they're playing basketball, or they're having Boy Scouts, or they're doing, you know, some form of exercise that they want to do. You know what? My father always said to me, "How does it feel to want?" You know what? We don't want, we need.
We'll go to this side first, if you could state your name.
It's Carrie McCall, Washington Street.
Last name Carrie?
McCall.
Chair recognizes Carrie McCall.
I just have two questions. The first one is the existing basketball court. Does that go away? Is that now a parking lot? I couldn't really tell.
Chair recognizes Bill Shannard.
So, the existing court, you're talking about the outdoor lit court?
Correct.
With the tennis courts adjacent to it?
Correct.
So, no, it does not go away. In fact, we have instructed the architects and our OPM to make sure through the general contractor bid process that those two items stay open during construction, tennis court as well. Now, those will require, as we move forward, some renovations. We have some funding to do that. We'll likely be asking for additional CPC funds next spring to renovate that space.
Thank you.
You could state your name.
Sean Dempsey.
Last name?
Dempsey.
Chair recognizes Sean Dempsey.
Thank you. I'm on Taylor Street, so I'm relatively new to the town, but I grew up in Plymouth. You know, I've seen how much that town has grown, you know, since I moved there when I was two, so that was like '87. We don't have the space for, you know, the type of development that they have there, but I think that our downtown area is -- it's really wanting for something, and I think that this is a really strong first step into, you know, revitalizing that area. You know, like I said, new to this town, been here for about four years, and, you know, driving through the center of town is really nothing going on there. I think that this is going to be a really good boon for that. But one of the other things I thought was important to note here is that you have $310,000 that's earmarked from the ARPA. That's not money that we're going to have. I'm not going to say it's free money, but it's there, and that's not going to be available at any other year. So, if we're looking at a project that's $3.1 million, this is one-tenth of that. I mean, that's -- if it's -- if this is $25 per person, that's a $5 savings right there. So, if the costs are only going to go up if we keep, you know, as I said, kicking the can down the road, you know, this is a one-time opportunity to capitalize on a very significant, you know, source of funding for this. So, I've been seeing the projects. I'm really hopeful that it passes. I think, you know, it's a really good opportunity. Like I said, the downtown area really needs a jolt, and I think that this is something that looks really great, and I think it'd just be a really positive thing for the town, for that community center. If I had any recommendations for it, you know, just having a gym space as opposed to like an auditorium or basketball court, it would have been great if, you know, some part of that was actually like a workout-type gym that, you know, the town could run. I think that's a different idea. Maybe, you know, if this isn't completely finalized, it's something that, you know, space could be used for. But that's just an opinion, and so, you know, I appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak. Thanks.
Chair recognizes Kathleen Keegan.
Hi, Kathleen Keegan, Owl's Head Bluff Road. Hello, Pembroke. I am a Realtor, and that building has outserved its life. It's limping along, asbestos and a failed septic system. It's not good for our town. And I also put on the Pembroke Celebrates and the Pembroke Tree Lighting, these committees that run these events. Yeah. So, my committee is, we love community, and we love putting on these events, and that's what this building represents, is community. So, please, vote for this. It's a small amount, and I want to see it happen. Thank you.
You could state your name.
Cindy Dacey, Furness Colony Drive.
Chair recognizes Cindy Dacey.
And I am an old-time Pembroke resident for 40 years, and I believe I have voted for every single override that this town has had, be it library, schools, fire station. One demographics we didn't talk about is kids that grew up here, and they had to go out of town for basketball courts and games. I have three boys who are now, oh gosh, 35, 38, and 41. Two of them own homes, and I advise them not to look for a home in Pembroke because there's not a lot for the kids to do. We have town landing in the summer and maybe the camp out front. They're in two neighboring towns that have a fabulous recreation department. And also sad to say, I believe it or not, I am a senior now, and no fault of the people that are running the Council of Aging, and I volunteered for Meals on Wheels, go take a tour in our senior center. Marshfield just built a brand-new one, and I either go to Duxbury or Marshfield to play cribbage, all kinds of courses, line dancing. Our senior center, I feel, is very degrading to the seniors that have been there in this town for a long time. One of my sons comes back to visit in the summer from another state, and he says, "Mom, I love the Center Pembroke. It's so beautiful, but when I see that community center, I feel like it was the times that we worked in Appalachia in the summer with church." Please vote for it.
You could state your name.
Hi, I'm Giuseppe Petrielli. I'm on Shipyard Lane.
The Chair recognizes Giuseppe Petrielli.
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 So, I'm 19. I spent a lot of time in the Town Center Rec Center. I did Anderson &amp; Daughter from the -- it's the community theater program that's there. I did that from eight years old up until my freshman year of high school, and I can just say for myself and everyone that was a part of it with me, it was absolutely miserable being there. I was there summer, winter, fall, spring. I did every show, every season, and no matter how cold or how hot it was, it was horrible. And, you know, every aspect, the bathrooms, the gym, the rooms with, you know, the holes in the floors and the walls, it was just no place that any younger person or child should spend their time. I also worked as a summer happenings camp counselor this summer for a few weeks, and they were telling me how it would be in the rec center if it was approved. We were over at Bryanville. Don't get me wrong, it's a great school, but it's not a place to have a summer camp. It's very hard to make it fun for seven to eight hours a day for these kids at one of their elementary schools. So, it would be really great if the center could be approved because so many different kids and so many different groups could have a really great time compared to what they're doing with now. So, thank you.
You could state your name.
Beverly Wigan.
Chair recognizes Beverly Wigan.
One thing that is very disappointing about this new community center is they should have an indoor swimming pool. There's a lot of us seniors that actually could use it, and I'm very disappointed about
Chair recognizes Steve Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, can we move the question?
Second.
Well, we can. So, the motion to move the question is not always, but most times in order after there's been sufficient debate. So, it takes a simple majority vote. We'll take it, obviously, of both rooms. All those in favor of moving the question, which means we go right to the vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. And there's no opposition. The ayes have it, and we will go right to the vote. This matter does require a two-thirds. So, the Chair will state that if there is any question at all, since this is very important for bond council and also to ascertain whether or not we actually have a two-thirds, if there's a -- we'll do it by a show of hands first. If there's a question, then we'll go to a standing vote. So, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, in favor of Article Four, please raise your All those opposed, please raise your hand. Only one opposed in the cafeteria. The Chair declares it so-voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds. Before we entertain a motion, well, it's -- there's one person who wants to speak, and I have to let her, even though I have to let her, even though we're not related.
Mr. Moderator?
Chair recognizes Carol Dodge.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to thank the committee that organized the community center renovation for all their hard dedication.
And the Chair will second that. We had a final total of 427 registered voters at this meeting, which may be our second-highest ever, certainly in recent history. So the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn, and the Chair would encourage those who have never been to a town meeting before to come back. This is democracy in its purest form. Mr. Tribuco moves that the meeting be adjourned. There's a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.